Good evening. Members of the audience, there are copies of the agenda in the back that will allow you to follow along. The meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission is called to order. Madam Secretary, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Ashley?
I can't get my mic on either. Wait, it sounds like it's...
That's just you.
Just me?
Commissioner Ashley?
Okay, here.
Oh, we got it. Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Louie?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Mr. Denny?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Oviot?
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
You've all received copies of the minutes of our January 25th, 2017, meeting. Are there any corrections?
If there are none, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Do we need a roll call vote?
Yes, you can voice vote though. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll now move on to items withdrawn or requests for continuance. Mr. Murphy, are you handling this for us?
I am, Chairman Poole.
Thank you.
We have two items that are on the agenda this evening under item D, cases withdrawn or requests for continuance. The first is CUP number 20, map 57. The applicant is Pilot Travel LLC by Fort Creeks Inc. The staff recommendation is to continue until February 22nd, 2018. The second item, CUP 1, map 138, the applicant was Vertical Bridge for T-Mobile. That case has actually been withdrawn by the applicant. Therefore, there's no action for your commission to take this evening. The only action is under item number 2. That completes the reading of the cases withdrawn or requests for continuance under item D.
I will entertain a motion regarding item number 2.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion as read into the record by staff.
Second.
Roll call vote please. Oh, no, sorry. We can vote on our screens.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Moving on to the consent agenda, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. These are items which are scheduled before your planning commission, which are being recommended for approval by staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to ask comments, ask any questions, or have any comments on the case. There are two items on the consent calendar this evening, number 3 and number 5. The first case is number 3. This is conditional use permit number 1, map 108-7. The applicant is ATT Mobility by Vance Palmeroy. The project is located at Jacob Road between Thompson Canyon Avenue and Williams Road in the Walker Basin. The request before your commission, the CUP, would allow an 80-foot-tall monopine wireless communication facility and the associated equipment shelter in an A district. The staff recommendation is to approve conditional use permit in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The last item on consent is case number 5. This is conditional use permit number 43, map 144. The applicant is Maria Robles. This project is located north side of East Bear Mountain Boulevard, approximately 1,000 feet west of South Comanche Drive, near the Arvin, City of Arvin. The request before your commission tonight is a modification of conditional use permit 43, map 144, requesting to amend conditions of approval that would authorize the permanent entitlement of an existing agricultural trucking facility in an A district. The staff recommendation is to approve the modification of conditional use permit subject to the original conditions of approval with revisions to conditions 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8, as recommended by staff, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. Your commission did receive two additional comment letters in support that were handed to you this evening for that case. That completes the reading of the consent calendar tonight.
Thank you. Is there any member of the audience that would like to speak on any of these items? If you do, they will be removed from the consent agenda and heard in their regular order. Seeing none, is there any member of the commission that wishes to remove any of these items from the consent agenda to be heard in their regular order?
Madam Chair, if we have nothing from the dais, I would make a motion to approve items 3 and 5 as read into the record by staff.
Second.
Five ayes, motion carries.
And is there, is it subject to notice of appeal, Mr. Murphy?
Chairman Sprague, yes it is. Both cases are final tonight, and both are therefore subject to appeal. For projects where planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the date of approval. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2,700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including today's hearing.
Thank you. Moving on to item F, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on tonight's agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state your name for the record before making your presentation. Is there anyone here for this portion? Seeing none. We'll move on to public hearings. The first item we will hear is item number 1 on the regular agenda. Am I looking left or right?
You're looking...
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. Tonight, we have a case that was continued initially for various reasons, scheduling and staff preparation. Tonight, I am going to pass the mic over to Mr. Denny to explain what has happened with this case, as he is an expert in SMARA, and so he, I'll let him go ahead and take over. Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize that we have with us tonight is Randall Katz. He is the staff planner who worked on the staff report for this project since its inception and has prepared a very detailed report for those who are into the fine aspects of the Surface Mining Reclamation Act. In lieu of actually reading the staff report, I think we can summarize this up fairly easily. What we have is three mine sites that were approved by your commission at some point in time in the past. That mine operator operated the mine, and we'll refer to them as Carlton, operated these three mine sites at some point in time, and in the mid to late 2000s, they filed for bankruptcy proceedings. As a result of those proceedings, they were not able to mine, and the question then became, after the bankruptcy proceedings had concluded, what were the status of the mines? The fact is, the state of California contacted the Kern County Planning Department in, I believe, the summer of 2017, and noted, as they had followed along on the bankruptcy proceedings, as had the county, that these proceedings were coming to a close. Mines that are not operated on an annual basis and file their reports can sometimes be deemed abandoned, and the city wanted, the state wanted the county to investigate it. In this particular case, what we found out was that of the three mines, two of the mines are on publicly administered land. These are lands that are under the administration of the BLM. During the time period in which the bankruptcy proceedings were occurring, the mine operator lost the entitlement to mine from the federal government. They have no opportunity to go back. We do have financial assurances that are required to be posted for mines when they were operating, and we have those assurances available to the county. We have checked with the institutions, and they are still valid and still in existence. But as the mine operator is no longer able to mine, the question then becomes is, who's going to clean up the situation? Because these mines essentially operated up until the point in time in which they stopped, and they were not reclaimed. The financial assurances are intended to do just that, clean up the mine operation, and in this particular case, what is required is that the county needs to obtain permission from the planning commission to get approval from the Board of Supervisors to go to the financial, to go to the financial institution and encash those instruments so that we can begin reclamation of the mine sites. In this particular instance, the report that was prepared by Mr. Katz has come to the conclusion that there is no longer the ability for the mine operator to mine two of the publicly administered land sites. They have no approval to be there, they cannot go back there. They have not been there for well over a year, in essence, for almost five years, and as such, they have not satisfied their annual requirements with the county as far as reviewing their assurances or keeping their documentation in order with the state and the county, and part of that is due, in fact, to the bankruptcy proceedings themselves. That being said, since there is no possibility of going back to mine those two sites, the county is recommending that your commission authorize us to engage the board to seek permission to encash the instruments that were posted for that, so we can begin coordinating with the state and the Bureau of Land Management to clean up those two mine sites. Carlton, the mine operator of those two sites, does not object to that. They understand that they have no recourse, they cannot go back to that. Carlton's concern with the proceedings that we have tonight relate to a third mine. This third mine is on private land. It has a surface mining and reclamation plan that was approved. It may still be in effect, depending upon who you talk to. According to the mine operator's lawyer, they believe that the bankruptcy proceedings stayed a clock that was engaged when the mine operator filed an interim management plan. When a mine operation shuts down for an extended period of time, it's required to file for what they call an IMP. That IMP can be for up to five years, and essentially, it mothballs a mine site. They filed that IMP in 2008. It should have expired in July of 2013. The mine operator believes that with the bankruptcy proceedings, that clock was stayed and the running of that IMP ceased. In our conversations with county council, and as detailed in the staff report presented to your commission tonight, we respectfully disagree. We do believe, however, that in accordance with the Surface Mining Reclamation Act, that when an IMP is approved, you can also obtain an extension or continuation to it. In this case, what the county would be looking is to do a retro approval back to 2013, which would then expire in July of 2018. If we do that, then essentially, the mine plan will essentially be in place. The mine operator could commence operations shortly thereafter and restore the mine. In order to process that IMP, we need to have an application submitted. It's not too difficult, and in reviewing it, we have to forward it up to the state. The state has to review it as well and advise the county, and then the decision rests with the county. The decision does not rest with the state. This is not the first time that we have considered, and these types of situations with an IMP that was being reevaluated, extended after the initial termination date. Given what the state has done to date in the review of this enforcement proceedings, staff believes that they probably, or may not comment on this at all. As you've read, the staff reports are prepared specifically this one tonight. While the state initially engaged the county to ascertain what the situation was, they have not commented on this project in the last six months. We cannot get a written comment from them on these proceedings. The continuation that we had in December was to see their belief in the stay of the clock, running of the clock for the IMP, and the most we were able to get was a verbal discussion from them for which they indicated they would not comment. So at this point in time, staff believes that there may be an option. While we disagree with the mine operator that the clock was stopped, we do believe that there is a possibility that we could extend the IMP for a second five-year period of time, which would cover the missing term that we're situated with right now. It would have to be reviewed by the state, for which at this point in time, the state has not commented on it, nor in the past have they be ejected to things of this nature. But if they did, they would comment, and we would have to respond accordingly. We do believe, though, that if we do extend this opportunity to the mine operator, it should only be for a very short period of time, one month. If the IMP is approved, it generally takes about 60 days to review by the state and the county upon deeming it complete, and if it is approved, it's only going to be good until July of 2018. It's not too far away. So what will have to happen is, the plan would have to be reviewed, approved, and the mine operator would need to demonstrate that they had activated the mine. In many cases, in order to deem a mine activated, they would have to remove at least 10% or slightly more than the material that they had previously excavated from that site. Now, what's interesting about that volume quantity is, the county doesn't know what it is. On the state's reporting forms, it's specifically hidden from the county. We have to request that volume from the state, so only the state knows how much material needs to be removed unless we inquire, and we have not done that to date. So in summary, while we don't agree with the mine operator on their opinion that the original IMP was in suspense during the five-year period and that the clock remains in place, we do believe that there's a way that we can reengage the clock to cover the time, to give them the opportunity to resolve that issue, and then commence mining to extract the material needed before the July date. We do only want to give them one month to do so, and if they're not able to get that application deemed complete within that month, we would report back to you that fact, and at that point in time, I have serious concerns as to whether or not they could lawfully meet the timeframes, but that would be speculation as to what would occur then. So with that, staff has presented a recommendation to your commission on page 12 of the staff report, and again, for the two mines that are on BLM-administered land. The first one is the Monarch Quarry Site. We would request that your commission concur with staff's determination that the mine operator, Carlton Global Resources LLC, is financially incapable of performing reclamation, has abandoned its surface mining operation without commencing reclamation, and recommend the Board of Supervisors initiate proceedings to recover the security posted in conjunction with that CUP. With regards to the Boron Quarry Site, the same recommendation. Concur with staff's determination that the mine operator, Carlton Global Resources LLC, is financially incapable of performing reclamation, has abandoned its surface mining operation without commencing reclamation, and recommend the Board of Supervisors initiate proceedings to recover the security posted in conjunction with that conditional use permit. With regard to the third mine, the Basalt Quarry Site, staff is recommending that your commission continue enforcement proceedings to March 8th, 2018, when staff will advise your commission as to whether or not an interim management plan was successfully filed with staff. This completes staff's presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? No? Okay.
Yes, unfortunately, Marshall Pettit, the head of Carlton, could not be here.
Can you state your name and spell it for the record? Thank you.
Yes, I am Stephen Gibbs, last name G.I.B.B.S. I'm a local attorney here in Bakersfield, and I've represented Carlton Global in, on past matters. I was here in the December when this matter was continued, and I've been in contact with the department. And as far as from the, I would absolutely agree with the Monarch and the two other sites, the two on BLM land, absolutely, we have no problem with that, and we completely agree with what the staff has stated. In discussions with Mr. Katz earlier this week, and in discussions with Mr. Pettit of Carlton Global, there is already an engineer out there, they are already preparing the interim mine report, the IMP, on this, and we anticipate having that with the department in, hopefully, within a week, but at most, two weeks. And so I believe there will be full compliance well before the next hearing on this, and we can take care of that. As indicated by Mr. Denny, we do disagree on the effect of bankruptcy. We've attempted to contact the state as well to get some guidance on this, and we also have not received any response, and you can make with it what you want of that. I wouldn't disagree with the characterization of Mr. Denny. As to the specific Basalt Site, we do have plans to immediately open that mine, and as a matter of fact, I would actually request that as soon as the application has been given to the county, that we be allowed to begin moving equipment on there and actually start taking materials from there, and I believe that would be something that would be in compliance with this, because there is no, there is not a necessity for an IMP if you have a functioning mine. And if we are starting to move materials, I believe there would be backdated approval for the IMP, which would put that in compliance up till the time that the materials were begun to be extracted, and then we would be moving forward.
Does staff want to respond to that?
I understand that the commission likes summary presentations, and over the years, I have not been successful in doing that. But the short answer here is no. The county cannot condone a violation, nor somebody conducting a violation. At this point in time, the county strongly believes that your IMP has expired, but is willing to process a new IMP and date it accordingly to cover the time that is missing. If you bring mining operations onto that site, you will be mining without a mine plan. Until such point in time as an IMP has been approved, there should be no activities on that site other than necessary to prepare an IMP. The ordinance itself is even clear. Where there is a violation of that title, this department's staff is prohibited from working on any applications or permits. If you bring equipment onto that site and conduct activities to reengage or produce while we're working on the IMP, staff will be forced to stop working on the IMP and take you to a violation hearing, which is a director's hearing. So again, county council has always cautioned us, when we look at these violation hearings, first, to affirm that a violation does exist, but second, to make it very clear that we cannot condone somebody committing a violation with regard to the title. So this department cannot support mining activities until such point in time as an IMP has been approved on that mine site.
Thank you.
And my understanding, at least from what your summary discussion before was, it takes approximately 60 days for approval of an IMP. Assuming that we have it there within a week, then we're looking at 60 days plus a week, assuming approval of the backdated IMP.
Go ahead and answer the question.
Through the chair, if I may. The provisions of the review by the state are codified in state law. We have no control. We can ask, and we are on a good working relationship with the state, as we are such a large mining industry in this county. So we will extend to you the same opportunities we have extended to other mine operators, and we will ask if they can expedite the review. However, the state law provides them, I believe, 30 days to determine that your IMP is complete, and 30 days to review your IMP. That is out of our hands.
Thank you. Commissioner Sprague, comment, question?
Well, I'll wait till the speaker stands down, and then I'll go on to Commissioner comments.
Okay. Does any, do any other commissioners have a question for the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My floor?
Go right ahead.
First, I have a question, Mr. Denny. Mr. Denny, I've read this report and all the history and correspondence in regards to all three of these particular sites, and I concur with staff on the first two, and on the Basalt Quarry, I believe that we should connect the three together based on the material that I've read and the history that's been there, present this to the Board of Supervisors to go against the financial security and get the ball rolling. This thing has gone on far, far too long, and we've had a history of that in Smyrna, of letting mine operators continue and get, try to get some money to the county to extend the permit and all that. This is blatant, and it needs to be taken care of tonight at this dais, thrown into the laps of the Board of Supervisors, and let them make the proper decision. So that's where I would stand on this, and I've fully absorbed all of this report in regards to these, all three sites. I think it's time to pull the pin, get over with it, and get it on to the Board of Supervisors. And that's my comments. So, Mr. Denny, is it possible that we can make a motion to include all three together to move on to the Board of Supervisors to go against the security deposit on all three?
I believe if your commission is willing to make the necessary findings, you can do that. It is, in fact, a recommendation to the board. The decision here that's before the commission is simply to write a recommendation for the board to encash the CDs or obtain them. The decision before your commission tonight is not to revoke any permits or determine whether or not this mine or is not in compliance. That decision rests with staff and the administration of SMARA. This time is simply a recommendation, or your decision is, the mine operator is or is not financially capable and has abandoned the mine, yes or no? And if so, make a recommendation to the board that they should pursue encashing the instruments that have been posted.
And that's what I would intend to do, because I think we get down the road to March 8th and pass that, we're going to be in the same position we're at, we're going to come back to another hearing, we're going to be asked to continue this scenario, when we could just end it tonight, throw it to the Board of Supervisors, let's go against the financial security as our recommendation, and let's get on with the program. That's what we're here for.
If you're asking me a question...
The question would be, could you formulate a motion for us that we could implant and move forward with?
I would mimic the other two that I've already read. I would just simply note, however, that with regard to the, with regard to all three mines, that these mines were functioning mines, they had financial assurances posted, for all intents and purposes, they were in compliance with every, like every other mine we have in the county, until they went into the bankruptcy proceedings. Those bankruptcy proceedings only ended this past fall, summer of 2017.
Yeah.
That is the only, during that timeframe, the mine operator was prohibited from filing any reports with the state or the county. There was a, and I would have to ask for county council with the exact terminology, there was somebody afforded or assigned to them a representative. They were prohibited from doing any communication, and this is what caused the problem.
I just think that we're going to be back in the same boat in just a few months.
We could, and that's why we recommended a one-month continuance. If that was the case, we could bring the third one shortly back up with the other two.
We've done that in the past, and it hasn't worked out, so I would go along with the rest of the commissioners. rest of the commissioners here and throw that on the table, and listen to their comments, and see what they have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Denny.
Thanks. So I do need to close the public comment period, but go ahead, Chairman Louie.
Mr. Denny, through the chair. In the staff report, it indicates that the IMP, the original IMP for that original five-year period, actually allowed the mine operator to start mining again, right? It allowed for that, the way they could start doing their business?
Under state law, if you have an IMP, you can take up to 10% of your normal amount and still be idle. In order to become out of an IMP, you have to mine more than 10%. So it is possible to mine under an IMP, yes, up to 10% of your normal production. At this point in time, the county has stated the IMP expired in 2013. We are willing to pursue an extension on it.
Give them up to five, they have up to five years that they can extend it?
Which would cover from 2013 to July of 2018, therefore affording them a plan again.
And would that be the same IMP, under the same terms that they originally had?
Unfortunately, the laws change somewhat, and there are some detailed requirements that need to be submitted in the plan, but it's my understanding through Mr. Gibbs that they are working on a revised plan.
And then, let's say that that happened, how would they go from being in this interim plan and operating under the IMP to being fully operational? How would that occur?
An IMP is essentially a mothball. It basically says that the, how the mine is to be, remain stable during an indeterminate period of time from outside effects, whether it be the public coming to the site, wind, water erosion, it's to preserve the public health and safety and the stability of the mine site. In this case, by backdating it to 2013, it would show that it was simply continued in accordance with state law until it expired. If they were to obtain approval of it, let's say in the next 90 days, they could then, at that time, with a plan in place, start to commence mining again.
Or any time, or any time before?
The IMP is expired.
Okay.
The present IMP is expired. We're willing to provide them an opportunity to file a new one to extend the old one.
So that they're in compliance, so that they can go ahead and start operations back up? Because they have to be in compliance?
Correct. And we have offered this to other mine operators in the past, when their IMPs have, for some reason or other, it's occurred during the sale of a mine, or for some reason, they let it lapse because they were having difficulties with their engineers and getting a resubmital. It's not common, though, to see them lapse, but it's also not uncommon for once a mine to go idle, and we generally approve them for five-year periods, to see a second five-year extension on them in Kern County.
Yeah, I just, and Commissioner Sprague, I'm asking these questions because I like to see businesses have a chance to do well in Kern County.
I do too, but through the chair, Commissioner Louie, staff, county, and even the attorney does not have a clue of what the 10% ratio is from the state, and the state could drag their feet on this thing forever, and we'd still be back in the same boat again. So, I mean, I absorbed all this, and I understand the 10%, but you don't know what the 10% factor is. They could start mining, but you'd never know what it is until you get something from the state that says this is the allocation of the 10%, and they've meant it or not meant it. So I mean, I, my thought was, after I read this thing, and then I'm hearing what staff has to say tonight, is just to skip through it. So I understand where you're going, and I agree with you on trying to promote industry and mining and all that in the county, but people that are in the mining business that don't cooperate with the county and do what they say they're going to do on paper, and then come back and ask this commission and the Board of Supervisors to extend, 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 and they're not capable even of doing the mining, and we've seen it before over my 20 years being here, it just doesn't happen. And these people just take advantage of the county in that regard, when you have financial security here to support what is signed on paper. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Louie, did you have a?
I did. I had, you know, my thought is, is that it sounds to me from the applicant that the, that this company utilized a tool, banked the bankruptcy proceedings, in order to get their finances and whatever it was their business needed to get back up and running. And they just barely came out of bankruptcy, according to Mr. Denny, last year. And so we might want to, well, I feel like, like we should maybe give them some additional time to see if they can get their legs back under them after coming out of bankruptcy. It's not like they just disappeared and weren't trying to get their arms around their financial problems. So if you give them some, a little additional time, maybe they can get up and get their company going. Those are my thoughts.
Any additional comments?
Mr. Denny, through the chair. Is there a cost associated with the submittal of the new IMP, and does that cover staff's time to review? And so as not to put an additional burden on staff that's not covered by the cost of the applicant?
Yes. There's a filing process fee.
Does that cover staff's time completely, or is that just purely kind of an administrative thing?
That was the fee adopted by the Board of Supervisors to address the cost for processing.
So I tend to agree with my colleague, Commissioner Louie, and I think we, I think we should give the applicant a little bit more time to try to pull this thing together and get this third mine back in operation. Not to suggest that they should get six months or a year, but I think what staff has recommended is continuing this case for about a month. The applicant has suggested that the IMP could be prepared in a week or two, so we should know in a month whether there is a real possibility of getting an IMP that is acceptable in place. And so that's my view. Any additional comments?
I agree with my, I understand where Commissioner Sprague is coming from, as far as his experience in these mining operations, noncompliance just being continuous. I am willing to give them a month to see if we get the IMP, if they can get their IMP turned in and the ball rolling to, as to the last mine, then at least in a month, we'll know if we need to focus on reclamation or focus on getting the IMP in place.
In light of those comments, I, unless there's further discussion, I'd entertain a motion, if somebody's ready to make a motion.
I'll move to, to approve this item consistent with staff's recommendation.
Second. Please, question votes. Four ayes, one no, motion carries. Is there an appeal process? No.
Madam Chairman, there is not, as the item is going before the board for the consideration of the collection of the financial securities.
Okay. Thank you. If there is no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The meeting is adjourned.